What? Okay, guys, it's 5:45. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, yes.
Everyone can hear me? Okay, great. I see that Dr. Hopes has not joined us and I cannot see who's in the room. Can Mrs. Saunders, can you let me know who's there with you?
I sure can. Reverend Golden, Mr. Kennedy, and Mr. Minor are here, as well as Stephen Die, Doug Wagner behind me, and Mitchell Titebaum in the far back row, Kelly Collins, and Michelle Boyce.
Okay, so we have a quorum, so I'm going to call our meeting to order. It is May 12, 2020, and this is our regularly scheduled meeting, our 5:45 PM meeting. And as I call to order, I'd like everyone to rise and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Let's have a seat. Okay, and I'm going to move forward with approval of the agenda. The Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the May 12, 2020 Agenda, updated May 12, 2020, and posted to the district website, manityschools.net. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Minor.
Yes.
I would like to move to approve the proposed agenda with a change that item number six under New Business, which has been legal services, be tabled. And that fourth under Action-
Under New Business in an agenda for a board meeting held in the last half of June 2020, and that a board workshop solely concerning board legal services be scheduled and held at some point in the first half of June 2020. That's my motion to take it off the agenda for this evening and put things into June.
I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a motion with an amended agenda and a second. Is there any further discussion? I'm hearing a beeping noise. Does anyone else hear that?
Yeah, we hear it here too in the room.
Yeah.
That's a fun sound. Okay, so moving forward, Mr. Minor's made the motion. Vice Chair Kennedy has seconded it. I don't hear any further discussion, so we will be voting on the agenda as amended, and the amendment would be to remove item number six under New Business and to bring it forward at a meeting in June. And I believe also part of that was discussion about a workshop in June. And there, I did add on the agenda, I think all of you saw that, so that we can further discuss the topic of workshops and other things, that's going to be later on, so we can add that in there and have that conversation then as well to make sure that we're all on the same page. But if I've recapped that, then I would like to call the vote, since I'm not hearing any conversation about that. And I'm going to start with Reverend Golden. How do you vote on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Chair Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Minor?
Yes.
And I vote I as well. It seemed as if Dr. Hopes has not been able to join us yet, so that vote will be a unanimous four to zero vote with Dr. Hopes absent. Hopefully he can join us soon. And let's move forward. The next item is a report. Mr. Minor, would you like to give us an update on the FSBA teleconference meetings you've been attending?
Yes, I'll be very succinct. It's a real privilege to represent this board in discussions with the FSBA. From the newspapers and from just knowing what's going on, these are critical times for everything in our country and with respect to education. There is a great loss of revenue coming in from our tax sources and both with the sales tax particularly, but also the anticipated reduction in the value of property will affect millage as well. The federal government through the CARES Act purportedly is trying to provide funding, extra funding for local governments, including us, and the state governments. We have not seen nickel one for that. I've talked with others in FSBA, and our story is not different from what's going on elsewhere. When it will be coming in, we don't know, or if. My understanding is there are two funds, and they're controlled out of Tallahassee. I'm not sure that they have them now, but that's the report under the CARES Act that it's intended to go there. I only mention that because what other districts are doing are being very cautious. I understand that from our superintendent in finance, they're being very cautious about how we commit money at this point, because we are in a situation where the state is expecting us to have certain fund balances, and at the same time, they are imposing upon us the expenditures of funds, the extra expenditures of funds that have been necessary just to keep this district running and providing the education that we want to give and also the state wants to give. But it is a situation of being in a very tenuous situation between not having the funds coming in, but still having obligations to perform. So we're not unique. I will praise the FSBA for having speakers coming in and talking about this. One of the topics, or the main topic, last Friday was how we deal with special needs students. And there is extra expense involved with this. We want to do this. We do our best to do this. But under conflicting laws, we get kind of vulnerable with this idea of we're supposed to make it so that special needs can have all the attention and help to, and resources to perform like other students. But that's very difficult to do with our budgets, and we can't, can we have, can we provide services like in a home that maybe has disease going on in there, but we're supposed to provide it, but we're supposed to protect our employees as well? Those are issues that we are facing, other districts are facing. We're going to do our best. On a side note, my experience is that parents with special needs children, almost on the whole, are very empathetic about our situation. They have extra powers and about being empathetic with their children, and they are working with us to try to do the best. But there are some places and some people, I don't know anyone in our district, but there are folks who say, well, the law says you're supposed to do all these things, which are impossible to do right now, and if you don't do it, you are going to be subject to a lawsuit, which eats up a lot more money. So it's a very sensitive situation. I think the best way to go about it is the way that we are going about it. It's with respect and care for these students, doing the very best we can, and appreciation for the situation that the parents know so much about. And that was the feelings that I was getting from discussions in Tallahassee, and I think that we're employing that. And I think overall, we're getting and deserve high grades for our dealing with these multiple situations, which are challenges for everybody across the state. Well, that's in summary. It's boiling it down to what I think's the most important thing, being careful of our funds, treating all aspects of this with respect to all the parents, and help them understand that we're doing our very best to provide education for every student, every child in our school district. And that's it. Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward, we have approval of the minutes. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes from April 14, 2020, regular meeting.
So moved?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. I believe the motion was Mr. Kennedy, and the second was Mr. Minor. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, is there any discussion? I'll just go down the line. Reverend Golden, do you have any discussion about the minutes?
No.
Vice Chair Kennedy?
No ma'am.
Mr. Minor?
No.
And I believe I saw Dr. Hopes had joined us. Dr. Hopes, do you have any-
Yes. No ma'am.
Any discussion about the minutes?
No ma'am.
No. Okay, then hearing, no discussion. I will call the vote, and we will just do a roll call vote like we did before on the minutes. Reverend Golden, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Minor?
Yes.
Dr. Hopes?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that passes unanimously. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for May 12, 2020.
Okay.
Seconded by Minor.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who was the mover.
It was me, Gina Charlie.
Oh, okay, sorry. So Mr. Kennedy was the mover, and Mr. Minor was the seconder. And we will, it's the consent agenda, so there is no discussion on this, so I will call the vote. Mr. Minor, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kennedy?
Yes.
Reverend Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Hopes?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that passes unanimously. Let's move on to New Business, item number one, approval of budget amendments for March of 2020. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the budget amendments for March 2020.
So moved.
Seconding.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Mover was Mr. Kennedy, and the seconder was Mr. Minor, I believe. I'll just move down the line. Mr. Minor, do you have any comments?
No.
Vice Chair Kennedy?
No ma'am.
Reverend Golden?
No.
Dr. Hopes?
No.
I do not as well, so we will call the vote. Dr. Hopes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Minor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kennedy?
Yes.
Reverend Golden?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously, or I vote yes as well, so that passes unanimously. Let's move on to New Business, item number two, approval of the year-to-date financial statements through March 31, 2020. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the year-to-date financial statements through March 31, 2020.
Minor moves to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Dr. Hopes, do you have any comments?
No ma'am.
Mr. Minor, do you have any comments?
No ma'am.
Vice Chair Kennedy, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Reverend Golden, do you have any comments?
No.
I have a question for the superintendent-
Yes.
About our financial statements, and it also goes back to kind of the budget. But as revenues are coming in, and this is now the closeout of March, how is this pandemic affecting our current financial statements?
I appreciate you asking that, and I can give you a general summary. But we do, of course, have a slight change of revenue coming in, a reduction, and our expenditures, for the most part, are still going out, because of course, all of our staff is still currently working and so forth. Some of the changes from the COVID pandemic that have impacted us financially of our revenue is a reduction of our investment accounts. As many people have seen the stock market fluctuate, that is an area that's also fluctuated. Other things that have ceased that would draw in some sort of revenue are after-school, EDEP or after-school care, some rental facilities. So there are a variety of measures that have reduced some of our income or our finances, revenue coming in. In addition, we have had to purchase many things that we had not budgeted for, some of which are a lot of the supplies that are needed because of the epidemic. Our cleaning supplies, our masks, as you see many people wearing gloves, et cetera, because we need to make sure that people that are still working are safe and protected when they're doing the work, and it is a requirement when they're coming in. Some of the updates that Mr. Wagner is going to talk about later are the additional measures that we're going to be taking and products that we're purchasing for the anticipation of all of our employees coming back in fuller force, but also in anticipation of what the fall's going to look like. So it has slightly made some adjustments. And remember, we also based our budget and our growth projections based on things that were outlined in February. And right now, it doesn't look like the numbers of people moving into the area might be the same, and so we are making adjustments to next year's budget with the anticipation of some of those changes occurring. We have heard that there are going to be federal dollars coming in to offset some of this. As Mr. Minor had mentioned before, we just have not seen what that looks like, and if it's earmarked for any particular items or not. So right now, we're being very cautious.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. This is a difficult time for all of us, and we're going to, I think, continue to see in April, when we close out in April, how that's going to affect the school district financially as well. And so I really appreciate the forethought and the planning that you're taking now for these instances. Okay, so I believe we went around. I don't imagine anybody else had any other questions. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, hearing none, then I will call the vote. Dr. Hopes, we are on the financial statements. How do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Minor?
Minor votes yes.
Vice Chair Kennedy?
Yes.
Reverend Golden?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so that passes unanimously. We're going to move on to item number three. And just as if last meeting, because this is the Children's Services Advisory Board item, I will be handing over my gavel to the vice chair, because I serve on the Children's Services Advisory Board, and therefore, I will be recusing myself from this item. So Vice Chair Kennedy, the floor drawers.
Okay. Sorry, Madam Chair, one second. Okay, this is item, sorry, I didn't have the agenda up in front of me.
Three.
It's for the ATOS program.
Got it. Okay, approval to apply, accept, expend for ATOS. Okay, board members, wait, we need a recommendation from the superintendent first.
Yes, there we go, got it.
Out of practice.
I recommend the approval to apply, accept, and expend the Manatee County Government Children's Services Advisory Boards' alternative to out-of-school suspension, or ATOS as we call it, program grant effective October 1, 2020, through September 30, 2021, in the amount of $213,303.
So moved to approve. This is Minor.
Second. Oh, wait, I'm the chair now. I'm really out of practice.
I was seconded a motion.
I was like, where's, oh, I already seconded it, it's okay. Gina, I was waiting for you to speak. Okay, we have a motion and a second by me. Board members, any questions or comments on the item? Reverend Golden? Reverend Golden signifies no. Dr. Hopes?
No.
Mr. Minor?
No comment.
And I just have one. I just want to thank Mr. Schreier and his department, Skip Willholt, Susie Ardella. I have sat through a handful of meetings of the Children's Services Advisory Board. I know they are there frequently to advocate for their kids. And I've been in there for Healthy Teens, they've been there for ATOS and other items, and I just want to thank Mr. Schreier and his team for sticking with this. It's been quite a process. So thanks to them all. Okay, let's vote then. All those in favor of approval, please. Wait, I got a roll call. Oh, wait, I was the last vote, wasn't I? Everybody said yes except me?
You said yes too.
So we're four to zero? We're good, Michelle?
Yes.
Did I just ask for comments?
You just asked for comments.
Thank you.
Asked for comments.
Thank you all. Gina, you really threw me off with this chair thing. Mr. Minor, how do you vote?
Minor votes yes.
Reverend Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Hopes?
Yes.
And your temporary chair votes yes too. Motion passes four to zero.
You got to, she can't vote that's-
Yeah, Gina, it's back to you.
Thank you. I apologize for throwing you through a loop. I feel as if that's the appropriate thing to do, since I sit on that board.
Of course.
Okay, we will move on to item number four, and that is approval of the Auditor Selection Committee recommendation to negotiate a contract with Cherry Becker for external auditing services. And this is a board item, so I'm really looking for a motion from the board.
I make the motion, Madam Chair. Dr. Hopes?
Second.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second. Since Dr. Hopes made the motion, would you like to start us off? Do you have any comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. The Audit Selection Committee met on a number of occasions. As you recall, the Audit Selection Committee is made up of all of the members of the boards of all of your auditor boards. And I serve as the chair. We had an RFP that went out. We had three proposers. One was our current auditor. A second was a local firm that had served as the board's auditor in the past, and then Cherry Becker. Cherry Becker was pretty much ranked the top firm by, I believe, all, if not most, of the committee members. Cherry Becker is a regional firm, and what was interesting is they also probably have the largest number of medium to large school districts as audit clients. They do Sarasota's audits, I think they do Pinellas County's audits, and as well as school districts in a number of states. We had an interview with the team that they're assigned, and they were the number-one ranked firm. And that's why I recommend that we move into negotiations, and hopefully in our June, I think, ninth board meeting, we'll have a contract to bring to the board for approval. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, the seconder, I believe, was Vice Chair Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any comments?
No ma'am.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
No, I don't. No comments.
Okay, Mr. Minor?
My comment is, many thanks to those who have been reviewing this and to come up with a tentative recommendation at this point. And I look forward to the recommendation at our next meeting. They're negotiating, to negotiate a reasonable contract for what we're buying. And the final word does come from the board. It's really, the wording might be negotiate a proposed contract with them, but let's not get bogged down in semantics. But I think we owe them all for their time and effort and expertise. Many thanks.
Thank you. Reverend Golden?
No comment.
Okay, and then it comes back to me. I want to kind of echo what Mr. Minor has said. I appreciate the committee's work on this, and I look forward to getting the contract once it's negotiated to review it. Hearing no other conversation, we can vote. I'm going to start with Dr. Hopes. How do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Minor?
Minor votes yes.
Vice Chair Kennedy?
Yes.
Reverend Golden?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to move on to item number five, and that is approval of increase in charter school funding for the referendum. That is also a board item, so is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I will move this motion forward, please.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, hearing none, that dies for lack of a second. I suppose I move on to the next item. Number six was pulled from the agenda at the approval of the agenda, so I'm going to move on to item number seven, which is, was added today, and it's a superintendent recommendation. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, and before I make it, I do want to apologize for the delay in this, but because we don't have another board meeting for a number of weeks, we had received another donation today of $25,000 from the Manatee Foundation to go towards providing hotspots or Wi-Fi for any of our students that may need those possible, you know, additional supports for summer school or for possibly next year. So we went ahead and abruptly put it on the board so that you could approve it, because we've already spent beyond my authority, so I have to get board approval. So that is why it's on here with such short notice. I do apologize. And it is, I am recommending the approval of the acceptance of Manatee Community Foundation Grant, number 20204611, in the amount of $25,000 for the purchase of 50 Kajit Smart Spots in the amount of $24,884.20.
This is Minor.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Minor moves to approve. I guess maybe-
Second, or, yeah.
I think Mr. Hopes may have moved about the same time as me. I would just second that then.
Okay, great. So Dr. Hopes has made the motion, and Mr. Minor has seconded it. I appreciate Madam Superintendent giving an explanation of why that was added today. Dr. Hopes, you made the motion. Is there any discussion about this item?
No, really appreciate the Manatee Community Foundation for stepping up and helping us out. Thank you.
Mr. Minor?
I ditto what Dr. Hopes just said. It's a great foundation, and Mary Glass and all the people on there, including our chair, do a great job in helping support public education in Manatee County, making this a great place to live and have children in school.
Mr. Minor, I just want to make you aware that this is the Manatee Community Foundation that gave us, not the Manatee Education.
Them too.
They're both very supportive and giving.
Okay. You're on the education foundation board now too, so thank you. You're, you're on the Education Foundation Board now too, so thank you.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Thanks for correcting me.
Yes.
No comments.
Reverend Golden?
No comment.
Okay, I just want to echo the thanks and praise to the Manatee Community Foundation and, and really that, how much this will really support our students that I would consider in most need, especially in the times that we're dealing with right now. The economically disadvantaged children, I think, are facing an even bigger struggle right now in this pandemic. And so I really appreciate the Manatee Community Foundation stepping up. And, and you know, that's what this is, you know, this is about our community, supporting all of our students. And, and I'm always so proud to be from Manatee County because of that. Honestly, that we just got a wonderful community here, so just a many thank you for that. And with that, I'm going to call the vote. Dr. Hopez, how do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Minor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kennedy?
Yes.
Reverend Golden?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that passes unanimously. Okay, we are going to move on to public comment. I think I need to turn this over to Vice Chair Kennedy. I don't know what would, this would entail. Perhaps acknowledging the amount of public comment we received. Maybe Mr. Dai can give us feedback on what this should look like.
I'll defer to Mr. Kennedy, he looks like he's ready to do something.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would suggest just to keep us on the right side of any potential trouble later down the road, that we just take the time to read the public comment. There's only, there's only five of them. This is clearly going to be a very quick meeting. So I just, for the protection of the board and for our process, I think we should just take a few minutes to, a couple of them are incredibly short, this won't even take very long. But I think we should be as open to public comment, especially given that this room is closed to the public right now, as we can be.
Mr. Dai, I'm just looking for your legal opinion on this. It, it, it is really down to what is legally permissible and what is, should, is allowed. So, can you give your feedback on that?
Yes, you're not required to read the comments out loud. So, but the board can decide to do that if you want to. But you're not, at this point, you're not required to do it. They are, I'm assuming everybody received these comments and have reviewed them already. I know I got a copy of them, and they're being made part of the public record. You don't have to read them aloud, but you can agree to read them aloud.
Okay, it sounds as if Mr. Dai feels as if, if we would like to have them read aloud rather than in the record, written in the record, and in our emails, which I have taken the time to read all of them as well, that the board would need to agree to that. So I'm going to just go down the line and ask, I suppose, if everyone agrees to that. Dr. Hopez?
I, too, have read them, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't feel the need to have somebody read them to us if they're in the record. And I would hate to find out that we have 50 of them in the next meeting that we're doing online, and we've set the precedent to read each one of them for a full three minutes apiece. So, I, I think, I think having them in the record is adequate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Minor?
I agree with Dr. Hopez. I don't think it's necessary, we've read them, I read them, they are part of the record. And we fulfilled our obligations under the law, and we've been educated by reading them. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy?
I clearly support reading them. We are, as, as board members, working less and less. I don't think taking 10 minutes to read five public comments is too much skin off our back. Thank you.
Reverend Golden?
As I understand it, the public comments that we are required to consider are public comments that are addressed in the agenda, which we have already approved and which we have come now to the end of. I'm not quite so sure I understand what would be the added value to what we've done by reading what all of us acknowledged that we have received before coming here, reading these comments. If I'm in error about the nature of the comments, then I might have a, a different attitude. But I, I thought that the public comments that we were considering now are limited to what is said within the agenda. Is that not right?
Three of them are.
No, but I, I, I'm not talking about the content, I'm saying I thought that the policy of the board and the requirement of the law, and I'll ask Mr. Dai if that is so, that it's related to what's on the agenda.
Yes, the, Madam Chair, if I can speak on that.
Absolutely, please, help us clarify.
The stated policy of, of the board, under the current conditions with the pandemic, is to limit the public comments to the action items of the board in the agenda. So you're correct. We did receive some miscellaneous comments at the last board meeting that were general in nature, but they, and they were, they were made part of the record. They were, they received, they were actually received during the meeting and not before the meeting. And each of you did receive a copy of them as well. They were of a general nature.
But, and, and I don't want to parse this to, to the point of, but, but this is before us now, I don't, I don't remember voting on that at the last meeting. This was something that came up, and I'm not quite so sure it came up in the context of public comment as much as it came up as a, as a general consideration. The long and the short of it is that I believe that the, the business part of this meeting has been conducted openly, completely, and that all that will happen with these public comments is that they will be added to the record for whatever purpose, whether they are supportive or not supportive, of what we've already voted to do. So I don't, I don't see the added value in just reading them. We're not going to vote, we don't vote on them, we don't approve them, we don't disapprove. As a matter of fact, our policy doesn't even allow us, for the most part, to discuss them. So I'm just not quite so sure why we even... As a matter of fact, our, our beginning comments, public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters. So there's nothing, no discussion here. They're limited to writing, so why are we reading them? What would be the discussion, what would be the purpose?
Okay, I, I appreciate that. I think Mr. Dai's advice was that if the board agreed to it, it does not sound as if the board does agree to that for the reasons that have been listed. So I think we all can acknowledge that we have received them, we have read them, they will be added to the written record. Anybody that would like access to them can get access to them. And, and that is the important part, is that it's for us, for our consideration prior to our vote. That is the important part. And that is the part that matters so much to me, that I read every single thing I get, whether it's labeled public comment or not, prior to my vote, so that I get as much information as possible. So, hearing that we did not agree on that, I'm going to move forward on our agenda. The next item on our agenda is workshop item requests. I asked for this to be added to the agenda because there were a few topics that have come up that Mrs. Boyes had suggested that we have a workshop on. I'm going to read those to you, let me find the email. Those three topics were the Student Progression Plan, the Code of Conduct, and the Staffing Plan. Now, those are all things that we approve every single year. So we need to have at least one, perhaps two workshops on those items. And the ideal place for those would be in June. Also, when we approved the agenda, one of the things that Mr. Minor had mentioned was a workshop to, I believe, review our attorneys, or evaluate our attorney. That is in our board bylaws, that we should be evaluating our attorney every single year. So I, June is, seems to be an appropriate time to do that, that would be fine. So we have several things that we'd like to have as workshops. And I also would advocate that it, it didn't get a second today, the Charter School Millage Discussion. And that really, you know, Mr. Kennedy had asked for that to be a workshop item, and then this virus hit, and we've never really been able to have a workshop. But I would advocate also that if, if, if the board sees fit, we could have a workshop to really discuss that better so that we can really come to some sort of understanding of maybe how we'd like to go forward, or maybe even how we'd like to go forward if we decide to move forward with the next Millage. Maybe it's not now, maybe it's two years down the line, I don't know, but we can have those conversations. So there's a lot of workshop items that I think we need to have. And so I guess my question was about when the board would like to do that. Would the board like it on a separate day, as we've done? Or would the board prefer it on the same day as a board meeting? And this is a two-part question, so I'll need an answer on that. And I will also need an answer about board meetings in June. Right now, we are booked for the 9th, but not the 23rd because we were trying to limit the amount of meetings because that was based on the advice from the state. However, if we do not have a meeting on the 23rd, we will have about seven weeks where we do not have a meeting. And that seems pretty lengthy. And I, I, I think we might benefit from having a second meeting in June and maybe keeping the 23rd meeting. So I really would like to get feedback from the board about when you'd like to have these workshops, and also if you'd like to have a second meeting in June. And I'm just going to go down the line and ask everybody's feedback on those items. And I'll start with Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My understanding is that we've already agreed that there would be a meeting on June 23rd. I support that.
Okay, and when it comes to workshops, would you prefer the workshops on the same day as those meetings? Or would you prefer a workshop on a separate day? Perhaps it'd be a longer day because we could maybe do several topics in one day.
With respect to review of legal services, we've already passed and approved, you know, having a workshop on the 9th to review concerning legal services. And that would, I think that should be, you know, separate, not before a meeting on the 9th.
Okay, what about the other topics that I listed? The Student Progression Plan, the Code of Conduct, and the Staffing Plan. Would you rather those be on the other board meeting date on the 23rd, or would you prefer them on a separate day?
I'd prefer them, I'd prefer them on a separate day myself.
Okay. Vice Chair Kennedy, can I get your feedback on these items?
Yeah, sure, Jean, as was said during the Audit Committee meeting last week, I don't have much on my dance card, so whatever, however often, as everybody wants to meet, I'll be here for it. I really, especially since we're running board meetings in 45 minutes now, I don't really mind if we have a workshop on the same day as a board meeting. So I'm, I'm pretty flexible, no matter what, what the board would like.
Okay, Reverend Golden?
I have no objection to meeting on the 23rd. I thought that we did. And I have no objection to separate meetings. I just am trying to recall dimly the confusion that we had last year. And I, I don't know whether that was with the Student Progression Plan. We had some issues about notice going out as to when we were going to discuss that and the length of time that people would have an opportunity to respond to that. And so that's, I'm hoping that we can get to that as quickly as possible so that we can have as long a time in between our considerations and deliberation and our adoption of the Student Progression Plan. And I think we had agreed that we were going to publish that early from last year. So if we, I'm, I'm suggesting that if we're going to have it early in June, that we send, that the notice go out now, that that's what we're going to be meeting with. If not, then I would want that to happen between, that workshop to happen between those two meetings, between the 9th and the 23rd. That gives the public enough time to, to make comments. And as a matter of fact, that's a better idea. We'll even do that, and we'll have a board meeting before that workshop, for people to get their comments in.
And it has to be noticed for 30 days after, before we can vote on it anyway. So after we present it, you have an additional 30 days before we can approve it.
We, we literally could run, but can we approve it in the July meeting?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so that, I'm, I'm just trying to recall all of this. So if we approve it in the July meeting, 30 days before that, we have to publish, which would be a date in between the June 9th and the June 23rd meeting. Is that fair enough? And if that date, that we bring it to that workshop, if we announce that now that that's when it's going to be at the workshop and give people an opportunity to provide comment to us by the 9th board meeting, then we've kept faith with the community in terms of them having input. And we still meet the deadline for being able to make changes that they will also have input in at the July meeting. Okay, given that, however that works, Madam Superintendent, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, however we can accomplish that, that's, those are my troubles. That's a lot said, I don't know whether it's clear enough, but I'm, I'm really concerned about that.
It sounds as if you're hoping that the Progression Plan will be at the earliest available workshop. So maybe we do that one first, and that you would like that to be noticed as soon as possible. So as soon as we pick a date for the Student Progression Plan, you'd like that posted. I think I understand what you're saying there.
Yes.
Is there anything else you'd like to add before I move on to Dr. Hopez?
No, no, the, the only other thing that, that we had talked about was the, was the student, not disciplinary.
Code of Conduct.
The Code of Conduct. A lot of the questions and issues that have arisen, at least in my ears over the last year, revolve around that. And I'd, I'd like for that to have the same degree of
Okay.
attention given. So those two things. I, I think the third thing you mentioned was the attorney contract being discussed. I think, it was a request for proposal for the provision of future legal services for the school board. I think, I don't think that a decision as important as this is something that we're going to discuss and decide by, by July 1, which would be the beginning of the next year. I don't mind having discussions, but we have some urgency that attaches to the Student Progression Plan and to the Student Code of Conduct, getting public input. I don't think we're going to take a whole lot of public input relative to the lawyer. So I, I don't see the urgency in terms of dealing with that on the 9th of June. We already know we're going to have a second meeting on the 23rd. But that those things, that the Student Progression Plan, the Code of Conduct posts a need for serious feedback. And in these challenging times with these virtual meetings and being limited, we want to make sure that people have an opportunity, know that they have an opportunity to, to be involved. The decision with respect to the attorney doesn't involve the public. Not, not going to get a whole lot of input from parents and what have you. And so as far as I'm concerned, I And so as far as I'm concerned, I'd rather do that on the 23rd and do the other two on leading up to the ninth or around, around the first meeting in June. I think those are the three things you asked about.
And the third thing actually that I listed was the Staffing Plan. And I also have received notice that we also need to have a workshop on the five-year capital plan. So it seems like we're going to have a lot of workshops in June. Which is good. We, I, you know, I've really, you know, Dr., Mr. Kennedy made a comment about working less. I am definitely not working less. I am working equal, if not more. But it's definitely working differently. And I would really appreciate to get back to trying to do as many things as we normally did as possible. So with that, I'm sorry, Dr. Hopes?
Yes, Madam Chair. I have no objection to a second meeting in June. And you, you covered the topics with regards to workshops. I think we need a number of dedicated workshops. We, we have to address the five-year capital plan with whatever forecast we may have with regards to both our return on investments. And I can, the next meeting, I can share the, the conversation by the Board of Trustees of Florida Palm, which is where we have a considerable amount of our money invested, as well as the, the staffing and a number of other issues. So I think that we should probably have dedicated workshops. But I would, I would leave that to the Chair and the Superintendent's discretion based on her workload and her staff's availability to, to adequately support the, the various workshop topics that we so desperately need to address. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is everybody's in support of having the second meeting in June. So we will hold that meeting, which I think is a good thing for us to do. And I'm also hearing that the board is in support of having these workshops in June, whether they're virtual or in person. You know, it's hard to say at this point. I suppose it depends on the governor's recommendations. Right now, we're in phase one. And as from my understanding, that recommendation came with us still holding virtual meetings. So I'm trying to adhere to what is the expectation. So if that, if we need to hold virtual workshops, we will. But it sounds as if everybody's in favor of holding all of these workshops. And I, I also got the impression that Mr. Minor's, Mr. Minor's motion that he made to remove his item from the agenda. He is stating that, that also added this as a workshop item on the 9th. And I really want to make sure I have clarity there. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Minor?
That a board workshop concerning board legal services be scheduled and held specifically at some point in the first half of June 2020.
Okay. So, so
Let, let me read, may I read it again, what the motion said? And that a board workshop solely concerning board legal services be scheduled and held at some point in the first half of June 2020. That was part of my motion.
Okay. So, and, and we all approved the agenda and, and we, we are moving forward with that. So I think we can work through that. But I also want to reiterate what Reverend Golden has said, is there are issues that are very pressing right now that we also need to make sure we get through. So I'm not sure it will happen on the 9th, but your motion says the first half of June, and we will find a way to do that without a doubt. But like I said, we will also be working on these several other items. Student Progression Plan, Code of Conduct, Staffing Plan, and the Capital Plan. Those are definitely things that we will need to find time to have workshops on, whether it's virtual or in person. It sounds like we're trying to be very flexible here so that we can get them in, whether they're before the meeting or a separate day. It sounded as if people were in favor of both of those. I didn't get an impression that we weren't. So understanding that, I will work with Mrs. Boyes to schedule these and so that we can get them on the calendar and notify people so that people are aware of the Student Progression Plan and the Code of Conduct. And one of those things that I always do is I try to put those things out on social media so that people know it's happening, they can tune in, or they can watch us later on demand so that people are aware that these things are happening. Because, you know, busy parents, they aren't going to be aware of what's on our agenda. So we have to do the best that we can to get that out there. And posting on the school district website, that's great. But, you know, I, we, we, as a board, each of us, you know, we have to, you know, put that out there too, I think. So I appreciate that. Is there any other discussion about workshop items that we feel that we need to do in the immediate future, seeing as we've already kind of got a big caseload coming?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Reverend Golden?
Yes, ma'am. Maybe this will be helpful or not, but I, I would rather talk about the, the Attorney Motion in one of the meetings. And it looks like it would be the ninth. Again, I just don't see the urgency there, the need for a lot of public input. It's very straightforward, either we're going to do it or we're not. And so I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to specifically suggest that that is one item that be included in the, in the board meeting agenda for the 9th of June. The other four items that have come up, I, I specifically would appreciate if we could create a schedule that would allow us to take the time necessary to deal with them separate and apart from an agenda. I know we got out of here, or we are about to get out of here in record time. But I think all of these items, the Student Progression Plan, the Student Code of Conduct, the Staffing Plan, the Capital Plan, the, 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 the Charter School Funding Recommendation. Those are five serious issues that I think that we need to, to make sure that we address in June. And my only priority with them is that ones that require public input be scheduled first and as quickly as possible. I don't know whether that provides any clarity or not, or maybe mud is the water more, but that's, that's kind of where, where I'd like to see us go in, in June.
Okay. Is there any other discussion about workshops?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could, this is Charlie.
Yes, yes. Vice Chair Kennedy?
Thanks. Hey, my first, my first question is, is with everything we have pressing, why don't we at least have a workshop on May 26th? It's just, I'm just putting it out there, food for thought. It doesn't need an answer right now. And also, as far as workshop items, I was going to talk about this at Board Comments, but I'll do it now. We, we kind of have, well, we have multiple pressing issues due, due to COVID-19 response. But one that is bubbling up over the past week, especially the past couple of days, is the issue of retention. DOE put out guidance back in March stating that, you know, their, parents would have the choice, I'm paraphrasing, so I'm not getting this exactly right. But that parents, parents would have the choice of retaining their student in their current grade if they wanted to. And so now, I'm sure as you all have read your emails over the past couple of days, and I've had a couple of people reach out to me in person, that either at their school there is a retention issue and the parent wants the child retained. But in our current process, it goes through kind of this committee process. And, and essentially, and what is usually the, the, the common practice is that we deny retentions. And I, I first came upon this issue when Dr. Green was Superintendent. And her rationale was that, you know, data shows that kids who are retained tend not to graduate high school, and they don't graduate on time. So I understand the basis for essentially, I don't want to say blanket denials of student retention, but you would really have, a parent would really, really have to jump through hoops, including changing schools, like out of the public school system, to be able to retain their child in, in their current grade for whatever the reason was, whether it's cognitive difficulties or a physical maturity issue, whatever the case may be. So obviously, with kids having been out since mid-March, and I, I understand we're doing e-learning, but I think, I'm not sure this requires a policy response from the board because retention is really, I mean, on the ground level, at the school level, that's, that's a superintendent and principal issue. But this is a, this is a kind of, this is a completely new, you know, we all know this. But student retention, I think, takes on a totally different meaning and should take on a different process based on where we are now. So because those decisions are being made now, and we're coming into the end of the school year, I would ask that we prioritize that as a workshop meeting, if the board even wants to do anything about it. If the board is happy with the status quo, then so be it. But I really think, my personal opinion, is if we can make it as easy as possible for parents who want to retain, want to retain their child in their current grade, you know, obviously, this is a conversation that the Superintendent would weigh in on. And I, and I'm anxious to hear what she, she has to think. But that, I, I, I think that, that issue is just starting to sprout out of the ground, and it's going to become quite an entangled vine here pretty soon. And, and like I said, the, you know, I think with all of this, I, I think May 26th would really be a great time. And Gina, my comment about working less was just, by definition, we're working less because we only have one board meeting a month now. So I think now that we've done two of these, we, they're running, knock on wood, pretty smoothly. I would hope we could get back to our regular schedule. But again, I'm, just one member.
Do you want me to interject? No? Yes?
I personally think that's when we have the workshop.
Let's hold off.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, we don't need to have the whole workshop right now. This wasn't a published agenda item. And I'm totally fine if we'd like to have a workshop talking about student retentions. I think that's fine. The state guidance did say that parents have the ability to request retention. That's not any different than any other year that I have ever taught. Parents always have had the request, ability to request retention. And it has always, in every school district I've worked in, been a committee-based approach. And I understand Mr. Kennedy's point of view that this is different circumstances. And if we would like to have a workshop about that, that is also fine with me. I can work with Mrs. Boyes to find a date to do that. I don't know if it would be prior to the school year ending or not, but I can work with her to try and find a date. You did mention if the board would like to have that conversation. So I will ask the rest of the board if they would like to have that conversation or not. Dr. Hopes, how do you feel?
I, I, I would prefer to have a conversation with the Superintendent, better understand the administration's perspective. I know these are different times, but I, I, as well as you, believe that it, it should be a committee-type approach. You know, oftentimes, the, the parent may not have the full landscape that our education system has with regards to where their, their student is among his or her peers. So I, I think it's worthy of a conversation, but I think each of us should spend some time with the Superintendent and her staff first to, to gain a better understanding of, of how the district's approaching it. And, and then, you know, have, have that, that more public discussion at the Chair's discretion. Thank you.
Mr. Minor, Vice Chair Kennedy asked if we would like to have this conversation as a, at a workshop item. Dr. Hopes has suggested perhaps we meet with the Superintendent to gain more information and then perhaps revisit this. How do you feel, Mr. Minor, about this topic?
I agree with Dr. Hopes.
Okay. Reverend Golden?
I agree with Mr. Minor and Dr. Hopes. And the sooner the better.
Okay. So it sounds as if we're going to move forward by discussing this with the Superintendent to gain more information about this topic. And if the board feels as if this conversation needs to come together and a workshop item, we can do that. Like I said, we have a lot of other items on our plate right now that I, that are very pressing. And so, and I, I actually like Mr. Kennedy's idea about perhaps holding a workshop on the 26th to maybe get some of these started. So I will work with Mrs. Boyes to find dates that hopefully work for us and so that we can move forward with that. Are there any other workshop item requests?
Only, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I am specifically and particularly asking that we do not have a workshop on the day of our meeting governing student progression plans and governing the Student Code of Conduct. That's, I, I just, I don't think that, I think that those are two subjects that require our undivided attention. And I do have, I have no objection to a workshop on the 26th that encompasses either the Charter School increase in the referendum or the, the, the student, the ESE student retention policy. Those are things I think that we can work into our meeting schedule. But those, that Progression Plan and the, the Student Code of Conduct, they definitely need to be separated out and dealt with, fleshed out in a separate timeline.
Okay. So I just want to understand what you just said. What you would like is to ensure that the Student Progression Plan is its own workshop and the Code of Conduct is its own workshop? Is that what you're saying?
Although, no, are those two are one workshop?
Okay. So those two can be one workshop?
Yes.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that, okay. So I just want to understand what you're saying. Right now, there is no meeting scheduled from May 26th. Vice Chair Kennedy, there was one, it was removed because of this pandemic and the guidance from the state. Let me rephrase that. Vice Chair Kennedy is suggesting that we place workshop topics and have a workshop on that day. There is no scheduled meeting for that day now. So we could turn that into a workshop day to discuss whichever topics we'd like to discuss. It would not be in conjunction with a meeting. It would solely be workshop items. These items, the Code of Conduct and the Progression Plan are not scheduled for a vote until the end of July, July 28th. So that would give ample time
Right.
for feedback.
That would be fine. The 26th would be fine.
Okay. So it's, it's not in conjunction of any other meeting?
Right.
What I'm, what I'm trying to understand is you would like those items to just not be during a day where we have a, a board meeting?
That's correct. And if we're going to use the 26th as a date for workshops, that works because I haven't heard anybody say that that's too soon for us to get started. And I don't think that the Superintendent cannot be prepared for us to do a workshop on these two subjects on the 26th.
I will be prepared whenever the board decides that it's needed. So we'll work out a schedule. We have a lot of meetings because there's a lot of information that needs to be discussed. And, you know, we'll, we'll work it out. I, I will tell you, I, I do believe our documents are ready to move forward. So we'll be able to have the meetings whenever the board's able to get together.
You mean the documents for the Student Progression Plan?
Both of them, in draft form. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. So like I said, I will work with Mrs. Boyes then. It sounds as if we're all in agreement, we're going to move forward with these workshops, perhaps not on board meeting days. So let's move forward with our legal department update. Mr. Dye?
No report this evening.
Okay. That makes it easy. Ms. Yost, instructional update?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Messenger, and good evening, board members. I would like to begin by echoing the sentiments of our Superintendent. We, the Instructional Services staff is prepared to bring the Student Progression Plan, as well as the Code of Conduct, to the board as requested and when scheduled. And we will work with Mrs. Boyes to make certain that they are posted for public comment, abiding by the required timelines. Additionally, wanted to mention that tomorrow is our final day for seniors. And as such, the night after, we will have shine on Class of 2020. As you all know, the school district will honor seniors in the Class of 2020 by simultaneously shining the lights of six different high school football stadiums for 20 minutes, beginning at 8:20 on Thursday, the evening of Thursday, May 14th. 8:20 in military time is 2020. The six stadiums where the lights will shine are Bay Shore High, Brandon River High School, Lakewood Ranch High School, Manatee High, Palmetto High, and South Lakewood Ranch High School, Manatee High, Palmetto High, and Southeast High School. And as you all know, due to the CDC guidelines and resulting restrictions, the stadiums and school campuses will remain closed during the time period of the celebrations. Members of the community can also join in by turning on their porch lights at 8:20 and leaving them on for 20 minutes that evening. So let's celebrate our Class of 2020 by shining on them through this wonderful celebration. Additionally, wanted to mention that we are closing out current school year activities and planning not only for summer programs, but also for the 2020-21 school year. Consideration is being given to even some hybrid models for the 2020-21 school year. Conversation is abundant. There are a variety of considerations that must be aligned with CDC guidelines, as well as guidelines from the Health Department. So we are staying very busy under the leadership of Superintendent Hunter. So thank you.
Operations update, Doug Wagner?
Absolutely, very good. Madam Chair, for our last board meeting, I described all the things that our departments are doing to address the COVID-19. These actions are continuing, as our teams and employees are working hard to support our education system and our community. I do want to make a few notes here tonight, what will happen before our next school board meeting. So we're receiving an additional 30,000 masks will be delivered to our school system. That's on top of the already 20,000 masks which we have received earlier. These are in short supply, of course, worldwide, and our team's working hard to ensure that our employees have masks as needed at the school sites and at the district sites. We're working on a project with Pletzeglas to have Pletzeglas work shields. They're tabletop. They're what you would see in supermarkets. I go to some retail stores and see them there as well. It's a way to shield employees from others who are there having lots of conversations with in high-traffic areas. Number three, temperature gauges. So we're product testing temperature gauges, which are non-touch infrared. All employees will need to register below 100.4 in order to enter. We're following the CDC guidelines for this. The bottom line is, if we have employees who are sick, we want them to stay home. Doesn't mean that you have COVID-19, it just means that you're sick, and we just want everybody healthy in our workplace. We're working on a return-to-work memo, which will go out this week, for 12, 11- and 12-month employees, SAMP and school hourly employees also, so they can start to understand our procedure for May, June, and July for our working hours and days here in the school system. As you know, we deployed 10,000 devices in addition to 400 hotspots. So starting May 26th, we're having students return those from grades 5th, 8th, and 12th grade, and also those students who are leaving the district and will not be here for next year. So that'll go on from, starting again, May 26th. You know, our teams are working hard to support all the schools, our students, our employees. No question, this is challenging times, and our employees are working hard, and a big thank you goes out to all of them, because they truly are making a positive difference here for the school district of Manatee County. So thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Well, many of my items have been covered, but I really do want to continue to thank our pastor group that we collaborate and speak with on Tuesdays. They're really doing a tremendous amount for supporting our community and efforts moving forward. I also would like to recognize one of our churches. Temple AME will be having a group of community advocates coming and supporting care packages for the families that have been going there, receiving after-school tutoring services with masks and other supplies to ensure that they keep safe and finish the school year out strong. So we just have a few weeks left. We are wrapping up things right now, but getting feedback as to what our summer will look like, and what are the possibilities that our fall will look like. So we're right now working on those plans, messaging them out with principals, getting feedback from schools, and then we're going to be working with different community members and advocacy groups, getting some feedback there, because the state, as well as the nation, is really not sure what August is going to look like today, in terms of the economy, but also in terms of the virus. So we really need to be prepared for many different outcomes. The great thing about August is, unlike what happened to us in March, we have a lot of time between now and then to work out more logistical outcomes than what we did on the last one. We were given a moment's notice when we were leaving for spring break, and had a week to come together with a plan to execute shortly thereafter. So we certainly want to take many things into account, but we do believe some sort of online learning could be a, play a role in the fall. It could be that parents want to continue their children in that method because of different reasons. So we're going to have a bunch of different outcomes, so that we're better prepared if we have to face one when August comes around. So I really do appreciate all the community support, all the hard work of the teachers and the parents, and the school-based administrators. It really has been a heavy lift. I also want to give a shout-out to James Horner, who, his last day was yesterday. Principal of ABEL is retiring and moving on to the next chapter of his life, and we wish him well as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to board comments. Dr. Hopes, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just appreciate the community's patience and tolerance and diligence. Let's not let our guard down, and thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to superintendent or staff, the administration, our bus drivers who were doing jobs they didn't expect to be doing, but everybody's, you know, coming together, and we're going to get through this as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The sentiment that I would like to express now is deep gratitude to our superintendent and to the staff, and to my fellow board members, in the way that we have been able to keep the community moving forward in spite of the many challenges that exist because of this health pandemic. And I truly appreciate that we have kept, as I touched on, the most important factor in dealing with the crisis, and that is that the human toll is much greater than the economic toll could ever be. I heard someone say, you can print more money, but you can't make more lives. And so I'm really appreciative that we have been able to minimize the economic impact as much as we can within the school system, that we've been able to galvanize the faith community to come on board and help us with some very existential problems that have occurred as a consequence of this pandemic. Number one, just feeding these children, and making sure that their families have sufficient sustenance. And so a lot of credit must go to Mr. Chapman, and a lot of the other people who are working with the superintendent, in the various aspects of making this, making this part of our community go forward in the least disruptive manner as we can. And I specifically want to acknowledge and state that we really appreciate the expertise that Dr. Hopes brings to the table in terms of keeping us focused in this direction. As a health professional himself, I'm sure it must be pretty distressing to see the disproportionate consideration and concern that is given to the economic consequences of this health pandemic. And I appreciate his professional work in keeping us focused on what matters much, which would be the economics, but what matters most, which are the lives and the people that have been so terribly, and in many cases, irreversibly hurt. Thanks to all of you all. May God continue to bless and keep us safe and separate as long as we need to be.
Thank you. Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I share with my cohorts here gratitude that we have such a great staff, great people working in this school district to be for their, be there for the children, for the parents, you know, to move education forward with care and compassion and dedication. And I think that as a board member, I think we all feel that we're very fortunate, you know, to be in a community that responds so positively to the needs, you know, of our children, and the needs generally in our community, for having our families, you know, fed, having our friends know that they're cared for, and that we're going to make this better, and we're going to get through this one day at a time, and we're going to succeed in continuing to make this a great community for all of us to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be quick to, I just wanted to note that, as you all probably remember, this was supposed to be, this upcoming week was supposed to be our graduation ceremonies, and I appreciate the superintendent team coming up with the idea to do something. In conversations with my own nephew, who is a senior in high school in Orlando, and he's the kind of kid who, you know, he's too cool for everything, and he tries to be laid back, but even he has expressed that he is going to be missing his graduation, his graduation festivities, and so if Alex is feeling it, then I know a lot of kids are feeling it. And to those seniors, you know, this is really a, just a crazy time for all of us, let alone being a teenager, you know, about to find your way out in the world. So we wish them the best. I think about the class of 2009 who was graduating into what we thought was the worst economy we had seen in our lifetimes. And if you ask those 2009 graduates, they'll probably, they would reassure you to say, hey, it might be bad now, but we are going to get better, and we will, we will get through this, which I firmly believe we will. So to the graduates, congratulations. Finally, on our HR document, we have seven employees of over 20 years who are retiring from the district. We have three employees of over 30 years, so I just wanted to give them a little quick shout-out. Sheila Lilly from Transportation, Bert Mullins from Palmetto High School, and Michelle Collins from Bay Shore Elementary. She is joining Mr. Horner in, well, they're going off at the same time, I should say that. So to all these employees, especially those three who have spent three decades with the district, we thank you for your service, and that is it. Until the next time we meet, thank you, Gina.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to thank everybody for working together through our meeting earlier today, and now this meeting. I know it's been a challenge, but I think we are getting a rhythm to it, and I look forward to the day when we can really all just get back together and still talk about not-business stuff, but, you know, anything. And I appreciate all of the staff and everyone else's hard work, and I have no other words other than to thank our community for their generosity and their support. And if there's no other conversation or discussion with that, and there's no objections, I will adjourn our meeting. It is 7:08 PM. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.